I would like to call this regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order on January 9th at 7 o'clock. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our next order of business, we are going to go into executive session, so may I have a motion to adjourn to executive session? Sarah moves, John seconds, all in favor, thank you. Okay, so this shouldn't take half hour. I would like to have a motion to go into open session. Sarah moves, John seconds, all in favor, terrific. Okay, next item on the agenda is the First Selectmen's report. Some of you may have seen the recent more sensational headlines regarding Great Island, the Great Island Purchase, and while most of the article is relatively accurate, the headlines are misleading. We have meetings scheduled later this week, and we hope will help move us towards a resolution. So as always, any substantive news to be shared with residents from Great Island will come from the First Selectmen Office. Or the Office of Selectmen, sorry about that. The town received weather alerts for strong winds capable of causing outages and possible tidal flooding on Friday, December 23rd. A code red was issued so people could take appropriate precautions, and the town continually monitored the conditions. The storm resulted in hundreds of families without power and significant flooding in our coastal areas. During the power outage, Eversource provided little information on restoration timing. Today, I met with Community Relations Manager, Community Relations Specialist, and Community Relations Liaison, and our Emergency Manager, Management Director, and our Director of Public Works to discuss this. Some of the takeaways were the storm had significant impact on a state level and was a Level 4 for Eversource. Post 53 will be evaluated to see if it fits the Emergency Service F-12 definition of a critical facility, and Eversource will be getting back to us this week on that. And Eversource recognizes how important it is to communicate plans, especially during a holiday. This was over Christmas, and it was really difficult for a lot of our residents. So I'm thankful that Eversource came in and that our people were able to have a discussion to try to see how we can keep this from happening in the future. Information's really important, especially on the holidays. Budget season is beginning. Kate, Jen Trineski, and I have been meeting with department heads to review their budgets, and I want to thank the department heads for their thoughtful presentation of their budgets, and I want to thank Kate for her meticulous budget assessment and her consideration of budget impacts on taxpayers. And of course, Jen, for the star that she is. On Sunday, yesterday, I was pleased to attend Troop 53 Eagle Court of Honor, and I would like to recognize Darien's newest Eagle Scouts, Connor Blankie, Christopher Cope, Pace Flaherty, and Kristoff Sika Nakarino. Ninety-two municipal leaders from nearly 60 Connecticut towns took the Connecticut Council of Municipalities Civility Pledge in December. And the Director of Human Resources, Susan Barksdale, and I were pleased to have taken this opportunity to make the pledge to help foster respectful civil engagement in our community and throughout Connecticut. Operation Fuel is administering an energy assistance program for clients who need aid with meeting their home utility or housing, heating needs. And this program is for households living up to 100% of state median income. So for example, a household with one person, the income limit is $66,270, while a household of four, the income limit is $127,443. So this is a drastic increase from the 75% of the state median income that was the threshold before. And there is no asset limit. So I encourage people, if you think you can take advantage of this, to please call Darien Human Services, and we will make an appointment and help you go through this. Again, on kind of health, January is the National Radon Action Month. Radon is a naturally occurring, invisible, odorless, tasteless radioactive gas. It's found throughout the United States, and most of the time, it's outside in the air. But it can reach harmful levels when it's trapped in a building, especially on the lower levels. So testing is encouraged this month, and I encourage people to reach out to our Health Department. We have some radon kits for free here, first come, first served, and it costs about $25 in a home improvement store. So I really encourage people, every storm we have, we seem to have at least one person that this is a cause for concern for them. So please, please listen to that. Research shows that a 52% reduction in nighttime crashes happens when they discontinue the flashing lights at nighttime. So the state is eliminating two flashing lights, they're turning them back to regular lights that'll be video tripped. And the two locations are on 136 at Old Farms Road, Old Farm Road, and 136 at Cliff Road. So this work will begin on January 14th, so they'll just go forward to just to a regular light. Finally, the Darien PD Police Department is once again presenting an opportunity for qualified community members to become acquainted with the roles and responsibilities of the agency and its officers. So the Citizen Police Academy provides transparency and greater insight into police practices and services that the Darien Police Department provides. The training sessions will be held on seven Thursdays from 7 o'clock till 9 o'clock from February 2nd to March 16th. So if you're interested in checking that out, please take a look at the Police Department's website. That's all I have, Kate.
Just on the budget again. As we're going through and reviewing things, kind of typical of any year, we see things that we could do better. So this year, you know, we're looking a lot at some of the capital and requests and what we can do to make our department heads better able to give us the information, you know, what kind of information do we need from them, and what are they struggling with giving us? So that's one of the things that's coming out of all of our meetings, is the things that we could do better. But also, the Open Gov, because we know we all only use it like once a year, Jen and I are going to have a training session. What we're envisioning is like a Zoom meeting, where we'll invite Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance, anybody from the RTM that wants to attend, and we will walk you through how to access Open Gov, answer questions that you have. So we're going to wait until after I've made changes to the budget, but before you all start. So we figure we'll do it in anticipation of when you guys get my budget released and want to start going in and playing around. So we'll also tape it so that anybody who can't make the session live would be able to go in and watch it. So if you have questions, you know, feel free to send them in at any time, but we'll also make it interactive so that you can be in there and say, well, how do I do this?
Good, thank you. Shortcuts, there's definitely things to pick up on picking up every day.
Monica's learning a lot.
Especially that I could use a move that time. Okay, Board Liaison Reports. Mike, we'll start with you, do you have anything?
Okay, thanks, good evening. The Light Review Board has not met since our last meeting. We are scheduled to meet this Wednesday, so I will forego any report until our next meeting, but thank you.
Thanks, Mike, Sarah?
The third new task force next meets, I think, on January 19th, so we'll have a report after that. For the Henley Homes and Royal Building Committee, at the December 21st meeting, we, as a committee, made a motion and all approved to authorize the design team to move ahead with construction drawings, which is a big step. And so the next steps are creating these construction drawings. Our next meeting will be on the 18th. And right now, the architects are working and preparing for three HHR-focused meetings for Board of Ed and Planning and Zoning and Creating Interior Design Review right now with the Administration and Staff. And from the construction standpoint, they're going to be starting the phasing and renovation discussions with the three schools, and they'll start that this week, and then we continue them next week, so that by the time we have our meeting on the 18th, we'll be able to come back together. And then the next steps in a few weeks, we're looking to prepare by, I think, end of February to go out to bid, so.
Sarah, you're still looking for people, right?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, okay, so.
We have two openings, so we love, we love help.
So two openings on the Henley Homes and Royal Building Committee, so if anyone's interested.
Five candidates right here.
They're all like, whoa. It is fascinating, it's very interesting, and I'm sure you've had an experience in Ox Ridge. It is very interesting in how all this comes about, and yeah.
Okay, we'll keep looking, John?
The IT Committee has not met this year yet, or this month, and I actually need to set a schedule for that, so I will definitely have a meeting before the next Board Selectman meeting.
We have, the January is scheduled.
Oh, is it, what day is that?
The 19th, 3rd Thursday? We went along, whatever we were doing in '22, we went with that.
That's totally fine.
Time of the week. But we do need to set a schedule for the rest of the year, or however long we think we'll be going on.
Not the rest of the year, so we will get our work wrapped up shortly. That's it for me.
Okay.
Ox Ridge Building Committee has not met since our last meeting. We did get our new schedule, and originally, we were meeting on Wednesdays at 10:00, and we've switched it now to Thursdays at 10:00. So our first meeting of the year will be on the 12th, so this Thursday. Mental Health Task Force met last Wednesday on January 4th. It's very busy over there, which is all good stuff. Just a big shout out, tomorrow is the QPR training online. It's the Question, Persuade, and Refer Mental Health kind of training program. What that allows you to do is to be able to identify people that are having suicidal ideation and being able to refer them to the correct place in order to be able to get help. That is actually going to be tomorrow night, and it's on Zoom. Anybody who works for the Town of Darien or lives in the Town of Darien is eligible to attend. You just have to contact Ally Ramstack at the Department of Health, Ally A. Ramstack at DarienCT.gov. Again, it's tomorrow night from 7:00 to 8:30. I'm taking it, I have not taken this yet, I'm looking forward to it. I think it's going to be a great resource for our town. Next thing is the AFSP gave some feedback on our Survivor Day, and we got, there was probably 15 people that attended in November, and a lot of feedback to the Town of Darien and to the AFSP on how wonderful people felt that that was. So that was a great resource to bring to our town, and we are going to continue to do that annually, which will be great. It was a beautiful event, I participated myself, and it was really good to be surrounded by people who have all experienced loss by suicide.
And there were, there were people from out of Darien?
There were, yeah, we opened it up to anybody in Fairfield County. So we had residents from Weston and Wilton and Bridgeport and Greenwich that all attended. It's the only one actually in the state of Connecticut that last calendar year. So it was a great resource to bring to our town, and people really appreciated it, so. The second thing is the Wave Strong is going to be presenting their fundraising, which they had numbers as of right now are a little bit over $12,000 that they fundraised for the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention. They will be presenting that on February 6th at Narroton Presbyterian, and they'll also be doing a teen talk, American Foundation for Suicide Prevention. And Pastor Gary will be doing a little bit of a teen talk that night, just to kind of support some of the kids that were impacted last year. That's at 6:00 PM, and they'll be giving that donation to the foundation as well. So it will be a really nice night if anybody has anybody who is interested in attending. Other thing is, the high school is currently working on doing an April Suicide Prevention Walk, Community Walk, which is the first community walk that they've talked about doing in the state as well. So the date has not been set for that, but it's in April, and it will encompass all the kids at the high school to continuously get involved and to really be vocal with their ideals on not being okay. So it's been busy, a lot of movement, a lot of, a lot of stuff happening. It's a really strong committee and doing really good work in town, so.
How much did they raise?
Oh, over $12,000 at this point. Yeah.
That's unbelievable, that's great. Thanks, Marcy, sure. Kate, public comments, anything?
I did not get any emails, but we got public.
Okay, public comment, anyone? Okay. All right, next item on the agenda is new business, discuss a request from Clock Hill Homes to forgive lease payments, and Kate's going to begin this discussion.
So the town owns the land that Clock Hill Homes is on, and they pay us rent on an annual, well, twice a year. Right now, it's in the $27,000 range a year. They came to us a couple of years ago, pre-COVID, to ask that we consider forgiving the lease payments because the association is having trouble with the funding for some of their large projects that they need to do, major capital projects. So there was a committee put together at the time to look into it, get some information. I think they struggled to get information back then, and it kind of died with COVID, didn't come up. But the request was raised again several months ago. So I did get financial information from them, which I have, I sent to you all. I think what I'm looking for from you tonight is what your sense is on your willingness to consider this request, understanding that if you want to approve it, it does have to go to the RTM because it would be a change in the lease, and they have the ultimate power over leases. And if you want to consider, what other kind of information do you want to get? Do you need to see to better inform you?
Sarah?
So if I remember correctly, from what I've seen here, the bid that I saw was totally fairly close to the amount of the.
I don't think what you were sent in terms of those represents all the work that would need to be done.
Okay, so you're saying there's additional work?
That's my understanding back when it was raised a couple of years ago was that there were issues with roofs and siding. And we have represented some Clock Hill Homes, if you want to ask about the totality.
Yeah, I love that, Marcy.
I mean, so I have, I show in my, I guess, I guess, before we get into the nitty-gritty, we have to kind of decide, is this, is this something that we are prepared to do as a group? Is this something that we, what further information do we want? I have a lot of questions, you know, what work has been done? You know, I show a capital project, I show a capital budget with like $300,000. I show a special reserve with $87,000. So I guess I'd want to know like all kinds of numbers, information, myself, that's what I would want to know.
So a more complete picture of all the projects that need to do.
Right, and you know, and have, is there any other way that the town would, would support this group? Is there, you know, we own the land, so is there tree work that, that it would make sense for us to do? That kind of thing, so.
So can we do in-kind assistance?
Or.
I think to do that, yeah, to get a picture of that, we need to have a full, you know, almost like a six-year capital plan.
Right, I mean, what work has been done? When's the last time the assessment was increased?
Regular, a special assessment, or, or like a regular?
They're regular, monthly. I mean, they pay, I think, $70, $70 a month into land, land use, right, or $76,000?
That supports the land lease payment.
Right, okay, so when's the last time their?
Common charges were increased.
Common charges were increased, yeah. So that's, you know, kind of the granular that I would, that I would like to know, just in general, but.
I'd also like to have, you know, a step back for a situational overview, right? So it's certainly been a while since I've looked at this, and I'd kind of like, I'd appreciate a discussion that sort of starts from the beginning. This is where we were, this is what we presented, this is what our intentions were, this is how our finances have worked out. And in terms of both the balance sheet and income statement, as well as just the general condition of the properties, this has gone along, and here we are today, right? And you can see the gap between sort of where we were and what was going on, what has happened, that we're now coming to you and asking you for this advance in this, in these payments.
So when you say where we were when they made the request the last time, or ever?
No, 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 I want to go back in time.
You want to go back to the mid-'90s when the buildings?
Well, I don't feel like we can go back that far, but I want to go back to some point several years ago where, quote, everything was fine, and we were on track.
Well, so I don't, I think that things were not fine.
Yeah, well, maybe things were not fine back then, but just, but something's happened, right? That makes it worse, or has given them the idea that they need this kind of support. And I'd like to get a sense for how that's evolved and how we kind of got to this point. The other problem is, is this enough, right? Because without kind of a full view of the state of this property, I don't have a sense of whether simply abating this particular amount is going to solve this problem and whether there's a potential that we're running into a fairly significant problem with the maintenance of this property, the quality of the buildings, the deferred maintenance, all of that. I'd like to have a very complete discussion and a transparent discussion about where all that stands right now. And so then, in addition to sort of what's being requested now, what do the finances look like going forward, and their capacity to actually get the maintenance to the properties where it needs to be in terms of our general standards? And none of that was clear with any of these, these materials. So until I see that, I'm not comfortable supporting this. But certainly could be, I'm open-minded to it. We have just scratched the surface in terms of the information I think I'd need to see to make a decision on this.
Those are a lot of great thoughts.
Wait for it, here it comes, team.
I'm just thinking, you just talked yourself into being chairman of a committee.
So part of the issue that I have is that these financials are from 14 months ago?
Right. Well, no.
Yeah.
Oh, the 1221.
Yeah, they're from the end of 2021.
That's their last annual financials.
And so, I mean, somebody's got to have, I don't know if you use QuickBooks or what, but they've got to have an accounts receivable, accounts payable.
You should have received some more monthly statements, like a November 22?
I have an email from you on Thursday, no.
And it didn't have that attached to it?
Nope, all I have is year-end financials from, in '21. So, you know.
But I understand, yeah.
I don't have an accurate sense of where they are financially to make that decision. And if there are more that needs to be done, I mean, if there's more estimates, if there's more, I guess I want to have a fuller understanding of.
Right, complete.
What really has to get done, and what are all of the estimates, and then where they are financially right now? What is the current accounts receivable, what's the current accounts payable, what's going on for, for January 2023? Not from December 2021.
Kate, wouldn't it make sense to have a couple of Board of Selectmen people work on this?
I think it would. I think if you ask, you would also probably have some willing people from Finance and Budget.
I think that's a great idea. Because this would have to go through the RTM if this was approved by the Board of Selectmen.
I think we need, do we have any volunteers?
Yeah, I mean, I worked on Clock Hill when I was on Board Finance, I know a lot about all this.
You did?
Yeah.
I don't know.
Since I'm not there, I guess I should probably help to do something, right?
There you go. Ding ding ding.
I'm currently on just Light Review Board, I'm happy to.
Thank you, Mike.
Work with John to take a look at that.
Okay.
If you wish.
Absolutely.
I think that's a great idea.
Happy to do it.
Okay.
Okay, okay, so.
So if I get saved, so are all you guys representatives for Clock Hill? Okay, all right, so I'd like to connect with you guys offline. We're going to need to kind of work out all of this information that we're going to need, that's going to need to be then presented to this board so we can move that along. So I'll get you my contact information, and you can get, Mike and I would like to see you to talk about all that.
That's great, thanks.
Okay, thanks, Mike. Okay, next item on the, next item on the agenda is to discuss the Emergency Services Study Final Report. And Kate's going to start this off. We received it, it's a very large report. I think we need to figure out how we're going to address it, so.
So right, as you said, it's a large report, there's a lot of data in there, there's a lot of, quite a few recommendations. And I think you need to take time. We may decide to take all the recommendations, you may decide to take none of the recommendations, but I think you're going to need to, some recommendations probably should come first. Because then it may be that you decide, okay, if we do recommendation number one, then we don't have to, they, you know, somebody else addresses recommendations number eight, nine, and 10. There are some of them in budgetary that I have included, things in the budget to address. So we'll obviously be discussing those at the budget time, but yeah, I think you maybe want to break it down. I mean, I would personally start with the very first recommendation regarding governance and civilian commission. I think a lot of the other things can fall out from there. But understanding that these budgets are large, and when you combine all the fire department budgets and the fire commission budget, it's one of our larger budgets in the, you know, in the, in the town side, town side. And currently, there is nobody that we can actually hold responsible. Not that they're not responsible, not that people are, you know, doing bad things, but there is nobody that you can, that as an administration, either Monica or I can hold responsible for things.
Can you, for the benefit of our audience, maybe back up and explain that recommendation more in full from what we, how we have it currently structured to what the recommendation is?
Currently, there is a fire commission, it's made up of three members, three representatives of each of the volunteer fire departments. The recommendation is that it should be a civilian commission, minimum three, they recommended three to five members with ex officio representation from each of the fire departments. So I think that's the, that's the one you need to start with.
Yeah, one rep from each department.
As ex officio.
As ex officio.
In addition to three to five members.
Yeah, because, you know, just as a comparison, the police commission is civilian. There are no police officers on the police commission.
Correct, yep.
And I think it's, like I said, that's the one you need to start with, in my opinion.
Is the chief ex officio?
Yeah, he's, yeah.
Um.
I think that's.
He's staff, I would, I would say more he's staff to the police commission.
I think that, I think that's great, I think that's one channel. I think maybe it would be helpful to the board if we kind of did a little bit of a matrix of, okay, that's, that's one thing that we can start on, and we know that seating a commission can take a little bit of time. You want to make sure you get the right people, so. But then there's the other, you know, what the actual, the processes for the different departments and the different agencies, so kind of like the people's side of it, and then the whole equipment side. So I think we need like a timeline of what, what we need to do when, and how that will help make the next decision. I mean, I kind of sketched it out myself. Staffing, equipment, safety, training, positions. There are some media recommendations from this, yeah, budget. But again, it's like, you know, I think it would be better if it was like a flow chart, or at least. Yeah, a flow chart, probably. What do you, what do you think?
I'm going to add to that. It was a little hard to follow the recommendations because they were.
Chunky.
Well, they're, yeah, chunky, exactly. What was lacking in there was some kind of a from-to analysis, right? What, what was lacking in there was some kind of a from-to analysis, right? So, so articulation of, here's where we are right now, in terms of whatever the topic is, and here's what we're proposing that you move towards. So for example, if I pick the, going from a fire commission to a town fire commission or however you called it there, it, it would be great to get a sense in the report that says, okay, here's the current commission, how it's set up, how it works, what they do, who the members are, and just general functionality, right? So that's the situation. The complication is, here's some things that are not working, right? We don't get it. This is not kind of, this is suboptimal or doesn't compare favorably to how other towns do it. Resolution is this town commission, this town fire commission that would be composed in this way, and if you set it up this way, it solves these problems that we've identified in our analysis. And so what I'm not getting out of the report is that type of discussion so that as a layperson, right, who doesn't know about fire operations and was not a professional working on the report, I need to have that type of summarized thinking for me to get a sense of whether this town fire commission is a good idea. I don't, I don't know that because it's just, it just says in the report, set up a town commission with civilians running the fire departments. Then that's kind of it. I'm, I'm saying that'd be critical, but these people know what they're talking about. I'd like to understand, what did you start with? What did you see that was not working, which would then inform why you've recommended this solution? Then we can step back as the people who have to make the decision, I, I got it, I see where we are, I got, I got a clear from to. And we need that type of analysis for sort of each thing they've come up with. They've done it for the fire apparatus, they've done it for governance, they've done it for...
Training.
Training, they, right, so they've come in all these recommendations, but it's hard to know whether staffing and all that, it's hard to know whether those are good ideas unless I see what their starting point was, what problem they solved or, or identified and they're trying to solve. And ergo, this is why they're recommending this. Because then we can, we can just, not, not just the recommendation, but the thinking and analysis that went into that and, and, and approve it. I think that will make, to Monica's point, our process much quicker because we can go in and read something and it should be honestly patently obvious what we're supposed to do if it's laid out that way with, because otherwise we're trying to do judgments where we don't have a complete perspective. At the risk of creating work, because the kind of analysis that I just described will take some work to put together.
There's a, there's a lot of that in the report, it's just synthesized, that's going to be.
Yeah, I, I think I get it.
I mean, the report is, you know, there's...
Yeah, there's a digestion.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, you know, and I have the advantage of having read it numerous times.
I think the difficulty, there's some very medium, I mean, there's what, 20 recommendations, maybe a little bit less, maybe 15. Many of them have significant budgetary, you know, applications, right? Whether it's fleet or, or staffing and, and I think as much as possible, even training. What does that look like? You know, with the flow chart, do we, do we have to put these recommendations in now? I mean, what's a priority one? What's a priority three? And do we do priority ones right now and, and put that in for this next year? And maybe the priority threes don't go in for a couple of years? You know, how, but, but are we the ones to decide priority one, priority three? I don't know. Maybe it's this fire commission because we will be creating new FTEs. Maybe it's not. Maybe it's going from a from-to like, okay, we have a, we have a part-time and now we're going to a full-time and this is the, the cost. You know, there's, there's a lot in that report. What I want to understand is, you know, it talks about everything from emergency operations control centers, like what are we not doing now that they're looking for us to do? You know, to your point earlier, can, can post 53 be used as a kind of permanent piece? I don't know, maybe it can be, I don't know. But are we looking, post 53 wasn't, it was included, but it was, I mean, I don't know.
They were not included in the study.
Yeah, but we look overall, I think in our town, right? Like, our town looks at them as a part of...
Our emergency services.
Emergency services, right?
Right, but we don't have jurisdiction over them.
Right.
So that's, that's why they weren't included.
Yeah, there's, and you know, I have questions like, you know, how many of the fleet need to be replaced, but how many can be refurbished at this level one that they mentioned instead of replacement? I don't know.
Yeah, so there's some things that we'll need to be reaching out to the fire departments for answers on.
And then I want to understand, you know, they, they recommend looking at Darien Police Department and going to the dispatch. You know, that's something we've kind of talked about for a long time. The dispatch.
Yes.
Darien Police Department may be coming into one. And I think there's been kind of this conversation is, do we combine dispatch? There's been a question, no, yes?
Well, the recommendation, we asked them to look at, did it make sense for us to bring dispatch...
Right.
The fire dispatch back...
Right.
To the police department.
Yes.
And their answer was no.
Right.
That based on cost...
Right.
It did not make any sense. They did also, they went a little bit further and said, you know, you may want to think about in the future, should you outsource the police dispatch?
Right.
Could you outsource?
Right.
And that issue has come up with us in the past.
Right.
So, I mean, I think that's one, that's kind of one that's easy to say, okay, well, we'll continue, you know, if it becomes a need, we'll continue to look at it. That was one of the ones I, I found easier to just like...
Okay, so do we think maybe coming back, Kate, with a matrix, kind of with a timeline and how it...
Yeah, I will get to work on that and I'm, I'm thinking, you know, it won't be in two weeks.
Right. Right.
Unless there's something, unless there's something urgent as a budget matter that you'd really like to get into this year's budget.
Well, there's some things that, like I've put into the budget that we'll obviously discuss during the budget. But I may also, like as you said, you know, prioritize, look at putting together your table, what you're suggesting with the matrix of, you know, where we, where we are, what the issues are. Making sure I get those done for the most time-sensitive ones first. And address the others, you know, give them time. But yeah, I will.
You make, like, some of it, they, they focus a lot on training, right? So that could be, and it, and it sounds like we're, we're doing a pretty good job there, right? Any additions we can implement, but maybe that's what the commission kind of focuses on.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. All right, any other thoughts on that? Marcy, no?
We, we have a lot of thoughts on it.
We have a lot of thoughts.
It's a big report, yeah.
It was a big report.
I'm sure this is not going to be the last time we talk about it, yeah.
No, 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 it's the first and for sure not the last. Okay, next item on the agenda is to discuss and take action on request to approve a successor contract with the Darien Police Association. Kate, do you have anything to add?
I have nothing to add to the, you know, what I, we discussed in executive session. I think, I think it's fair contract.
Okay. With that said, may I have a motion to approve the tentative agreement between the town of Darien and the Darien Police Association and to refer the agreement to the Board of Finance for report and to the representative town meeting as the Darien legislative body for final action? Marcy moves? John seconds, all in favor? Mike?
I will vote aye.
Aye, okay, unanimous. Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda is to discuss and take action to approve a proposed lease of the rail state, railroad station concessions. Kate, you want to go over there?
So we were, you know, we, we had for a long time a coffee stand at both stations. At, during COVID, the gentleman ceased operations. We were approached sometime earlier this year by a resident who was interested in opening up a concession in both stations. So we've been working on this for quite some time, trying to get terms and stuff ironed out. And I wanted to try and get this moving so that we're in a position, I think we're close to having all the lease terms agreed to. But I wanted to put the town in a position that we could act without having to come back to the Board of Selectmen, which means we'll be twice a month to get authorization. So what I'm asking you to do is to authorize a first selectman to sign a lease subject to agreement on the terms by the town council and town administrator.
Any discussion? Okay. Seeing none, may I have a motion to authorize the first selectman to sign a lease for the railroad station concessions, subject to the terms of the lease being approved by town council and town administrator? Sarah moves? John seconds? Mike?
I vote aye.
Aye, okay, unanimous. Thank you. All right, next item on the agenda is to discuss and take action on a proposed settlement of litigation. Kate?
As the town attorney explained to earlier, we are, we have a proposed settlement for the case of William Frank versus the town of Darien, amending the tax, the assessed value effective the grand list of October 1, 2020.
Any discussion? Seeing none, I'd like to thank our town council and...
Motion.
No, I'm not done.
Oh, okay, sorry.
I'm not done, I'm chatting away here. I want to thank our town council, Wayne Fox, and also Tony Homicki for working on this. May I have a motion to approve the settlement of the case of William Frank versus the town of Darien, amending the fair market value of the property from four, $4,414,000 to $4,200,000 effective applicable to the grand list of October 1, 2020, in accordance with the stipulation for judgment? Marcy moves? Sarah seconds, all in favor? Mike?
I vote aye.
Aye, unanimous, thank you. Next item on the agenda is to review and approve the minutes of the December 19, 2022 regular meeting. Any additions, deletions, changes? Kate, the only thing I would say is, on in attendance, do you want to add Craig Flaherty and Dan Boggs to that?
Biggs.
Okay. Okay. All right, with those additions, may I have a motion to approve the minutes of December 19, 2022 regular meeting? Sarah moves? John seconds, all in favor? Mike?
I vote aye.
Aye, okay, unanimous, thank you. Agenda review, are there any topics board members would like to see on future agendas? Agenda?
No, but when are we getting our budget? Do we have a date? If we're meeting on the 29th, is our first meeting?
Right, so I need to look at a calendar. It should be the, you should, we should be giving you access the week before. So there will be no big presentation from me this year. We'll give you access, we'll, you know, do a little training for you, but we'll just at some point send you an email and say...
It's on.
It's on.
Fantastic, thank you.
Okay. Does that work for everybody? Works for me? Okay. All right, I, my last thought was January 24th is a joint department heads meeting. It begins at 8:30 in the morning and our department heads work very hard. And so I really appreciate people making time to come to these meetings. I know they're during the day and everybody works. And that's all I have. So with that, may I have a motion to adjourn? Marcy moves? Sarah seconds, all in favor? Mike?
Aye.
Aye, okay, meeting adjourned. Thank you.